Give everybody another minute. All right, I'd like to call the Board of Trustees for the Village of Cottage Grove. A meeting to order is Monday, October 5th. It is 6:31 on my watch right now. We are holding this meeting as a Zoom meeting due to the COVID-19 pandemic. The meeting is being recorded and so audio chat in Zoom meeting and video are all being recorded. Somebody should be aware of that. There is a link to the video portion of this through Zoom on top of our agenda. And then certainly a dial-in number there as well for those that are just dialing in for the audio. With that, we'll do a roll call from Lisa.
All right, Allen.
Present.
Limberg.
Present.
Murphy.
Present.
Ratcliffe.
Here.
Valencia.
Present.
Vander Velde.
Present.
And Williams.
Present.
We are all here.
All right. We do have a quorum and the agenda was properly posted. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. So. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item four is public's appearance appearances, public's opportunity to speak on any subject either on the agenda or not on the agenda. We'd like to try to limit this to about three minutes for your take your talking points. Please share your name and your address when you do do speak so that we can capture that for posterity for the meeting minutes. So I'll pause and allow anybody to jump in if they'd like from the public.
Hi, I am Cindy Kell Nelson, 233 Forest and Drive. I'm just here as a representative of the cottage of the elementary school PTO. And I know we had communicated a little bit about Halloween plans and maybe doing a Halloween parade walk, that kind of thing. And we just decided today as the PTO not to go ahead with that. So I just wanted to let you know that that's not going to happen.
All right, thanks Cindy. Now I know that some of the staff were working with the PTO as well to try to sort that out. But I appreciate you chiming in and letting letting us know as well. So if there's no other folks from public, we'll move on then to discuss and consider a meeting minutes from our regular board more, excuse me, board meeting from September 21st. Any questions, comments, edits from the board?
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, we got a first from Melissa, second from Troy. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Motion carries. Moving on to item six then is presentation to board. The first here is a presentation for the Manor Grove School District regarding the upcoming referendum. So that is the first one. I see that Dan, you're on. Dan, you are you starting this off or are you?
Yes, I am. Thank you, John. So it's okay, I'll go ahead and begin. So with me this evening also is Jared Rosie and our Director of Business Services and Katie Burns Kaiser, our Communications Director. And so thank you first of all for giving us a little bit of your time this evening. As your residents, you all should have received a newsletter through the mail a couple of weeks ago that has all the details regarding the referendum. And so we'll just do a very short presentation this evening, just highlighting a couple of the key points. But more importantly, an opportunity for you as our village officials to make sure that you don't have any questions or we can answer any questions that you might have about it, you know, this evening. So it's okay, we'll just kind of jump in and there's really kind of these five key things that that we'd like to just address. Of course, first and foremost is the funding and budget and what, you know, why are we proposing this referendum? Secondly, what does this have to do with the expiration of the 2016 operating referendum? Third, of course, what is the cost of our taxpayers with regard to the $3.7 million operating referendum? Next, what happens if we are not able to pass the referendum? Then finally, any other final questions and opportunity for conversations with our constituents? So. So let's talk a little bit about funding. Again, it's for $3.7 million of operating. That means our general budget, our general expenditures. And to take a look a little bit about what our overall operating budget looks like. Our current budget for 2021 that was recently adopted, we actually started with about a $500,000 deficit. We did our board did ultimately approve a balanced budget. And to keep put that perspective, our overall budget is about $45 million for overall operating. And so the the reason for the deficit begin with, and by deficit meaning just carrying over all existing programmings and staffing and so on. You know, based upon the allowable increase that we were able to have through our revenue limits and state aid, that's where we started. And really, you know, every year we look at our budget, really it's the long term. The information is on this slide. Now, this is statewide data that inflation grew by about 17% over a 10-year period, while revenues for school district averaged only about 60%. Now, those aren't our numbers here in Manor Grove as we know that we've had previous referendums that our taxpayers have supported us to help close that gap. So I'd like to talk a little bit about more about, well, what does our gap look like then here in our school district? And so this is just another chart that shows historically what our revenues have looked at like, you know, all the way back to 2007. And just a little bit of perspective. So we always get our our annual increases on a per pupil basis. And we went back to 2007, eight with this chart to show at that time, our per pupil increases were just under $300 per student. And that was essentially a cost of living increase. We were able to keep up, that was, you know, kept up with inflation and and in general, we were doing, you know, okay with those numbers. And then the economy, you know, took a little bit of a turn and oh nine, 10, a little bit less reduction. And so, you know, as you know, a number of our fixed costs don't, you know, stay stay controlled. And so that created a little bit of an issue. And then, of course, Act 10 in 2011 with the Budget Repair Bill, and that's where the big decrease was. As you know, that's how, you know, at that time, school districts balanced their budgets primarily by reducing what we paid in compensation, primarily benefits, you know, for our employees in contributions to the retirement fund as well as health insurance. Then from 2012 on, we've gotten our aid in a little bit different manner. So you'll see the graph represents a dark blue and light blue. The most important thing is that between the dark blue is revenue limit authority, the light blue is a per pupil aid amount. But between the two of them, that's essentially what our increases have been allowed over time. And again, you see all those years until 19 really have been, you know, at $200 or less. That freeze in 2016 coincides with the last operating referendum. And that was really what caused or the rationale for the operating at that time is that there was a freeze in our school board felt at the time. We've made a number of reductions over time, but this is, you know, too much and we need to ask for additional support from our from our taxpayers. So that's kind of the historical view at our overall budget. Now let's look at our current budget and why now this year? So as I mentioned, that 2016 operating referendum, that expires at the end of this current school year. That was a five-year referendum, which meant that it gave the school board the authority to increase the revenue limits by $2.6 million for those five years. And so really, this referendum then is a renewal of that and I'd call the renewal plus. So it's renewing the 2.6 and then asking for an additional 1.1 million for a total of 3.7. Now, why the increase from the 2.6? And there's really three key reasons. One is the inflationary increases that we haven't been able to keep up with. As I mentioned, we started the year with about a $500,000 deficit. And so part of it is to make up for for those funds. Secondly, we need to invest more heavily in in our teachers. It's becoming more and more competitive to hire and retain quality teachers. It will have a slide that shows a little bit about, you know, what the the teacher pool looks like as far as the number of candidates out there. And so that's a really important part that we've got to try to stay and be more competitive actually with our compensation for teachers. And then the third impact that is a little bit of an unknown right now is of COVID-19. What we are fairly certain of is that we know that the state economy has taken a hit. We know that if the state legislature has less tax revenues to work with, that that will likely impact our school revenues. And so our early projection estimates it could be as much as $700,000 in a decrease in revenue. Again, that's a projection, that's not a certainty, but I think we feel pretty confident there'll be some sort of of reduction in our state aid moving forward in the next state budget. So to talk about, I guess, the next piece, the most, you know, important thing to our taxpayers is, you know, what is the impact, you know, of the $3.7 million? And so the next chart shows the estimated impact on our taxpayers. And so with if it's a pass for the $3.7 million of spending authority, $40 per, you know, $1,000, excuse me, $100,000 of fair market value. The chart, I think, is pretty self-explanatory. And, you know, if there's questions of that, you you're well aware as, you know, village officials about how assessments work and so on. But this would be the estimated, you know, average for the average homeowner in the district. And then this next chart just shows a historical look at our mill rate. And again, we know mill rates only part of the story. But this, we went back to 93 with this one, just to kind of show the history. You may recall in 1993 is when the state first imposed revenue limits on school districts. And the rationale was that we were way too heavily funded by property taxes. You can see the property taxes were extremely high or the rate was very high at that point. And so revenue limits were put in place, plus an investment from the state in in state aid as well that brought those property tax rates down. And then, you know, from about 2008 on, we've been pretty steady, you know, with some increases and decreases. Just looking at the most current, you'll see in 2016, there was a slight bump up from the last operating referendum. Then we had a couple of years in a row, the mill rate went down. And then the bump up in 2019 is actually a result of the facilities referendum that was recently passed. You know, it's interesting to note that that had less of an impact on our mill rate than the previous operating referendum. Part of that is, you know, is because, you know, that those expenses are spread out over 20 years, you know, in the bond, right? And and our equalized values as a district continue to grow, you know, faster than inflation. So the rates continue to, you know, maintain or drop. So again, that's that's kind of the historical picture of mill rate. And so then, okay, what what about the budget? Okay, what happens if if this referendum were to fail? Well, we're looking at over $3 million of a deficit that we would have to deal with. The exact, there hasn't been a decision exactly which programs or staff, how that would be decided. Because for that kind of dollar amount, our board absolutely would want to engage our stakeholders in conversations to determine priorities and where we'd have to make those reductions. But the most important thing is that, you know, a $3 million deficit is a significant reduction. It absolutely would involve staff. About 77% of our budget is for salary and benefits for our staff. I mean, that's what we have, you know, we have about 500 employees, that that's the most, you know, that's what school districts do. And so without question, there would have to be reductions somewhere and possibly affecting things like class size or program. But again, that's something that that we certainly hope that we don't have to worry about. But if if that were the case, we'd have to have some very difficult, you know, conversations. And then the other thing I should mention, to be fair, is that the timing of this referendum, it is with the November general election. If it were to fail, there is another election in April that the board could consider coming back with a different question at that time. So that would also be on the table if this were not to pass. And then we just have some information in the slides about opportunities to engage with our public. We're continuing to have virtual open doors. We had one earlier this evening. We had a nice turnout of some of our community members that joined us. All this information is on our website and and we welcome the opportunity to answer questions and talk in this virtual world. We're doing all these things virtually. It's been a little bit different, but in some respects, it makes it more convenient for people as well to log in and not have to go to a meeting. So so far, that's gone pretty well. And of course, we want to make sure we share voter information. So we're passing along the information you have, of course, from the village. And we just want to make sure our voters are informed is the most important thing so they can, you know, make an informed decision when they do vote. And of course, the other thing is, as you know, with early voting, we've already had a number of folks who already have voted will be well before election date. So it really is, you know, makes it a challenge for us to make sure we try to get this information out as timely as possible so people are informed. All right, so that was a really fast, you know, go through that. We have our contact information, of course, after this evening. If there are other questions, of course, feel free to reach out directly to Jared or myself. We'll be glad to take calls from anyone. Of course, email is always an opportunity for anyone as well. Our board members also would gladly, you know, respond to any constituents have questions. So with that, I'm much more interested in wanting to know what you might have questions about and make sure that we can answer those for you this evening. So I'll stop there.
All right, thanks, Dan. I guess I'll turn this over to the board. I've got a few questions, but I'll hold off on those if the board has any questions. For Dan or Jared?
Yeah, I do. This is Sarah. Hi, Dan, thanks for coming in, Jared. So given that we had this an operation referendum five years ago and we have one now and we're still facing the budget deficit. Is it reasonable to expect that this is kind of the future state every five years or so? We're going to need to look at a referendum?
Yeah, that's a really fair question, you know. And I know when that question came up five years ago, it was, it was, we, some of our board members struggled to to answer that. And but we knew at that point, it was highly unlikely that the state formula would change significantly, that we wouldn't have to come back. So I think, so the board was deliberate about asking for four years at this point with the idea that our state budget runs on, you know, two-year cycles. We'd always be on an election year. And so I think it's it's a fair assumption that, yeah, there'll be a renewal again in four years unless something changes pretty dramatically with the state funding formula.
Thank you.
Mr. Olson, this is Troy Allen. Thank you. Thanks very much. If you could go back to slide five about inflation, I guess I'm just curious from a clarity standpoint. If inflation was up, I believe, 17% in that time period, what was the funding up in specifically in MG School District?
That's a really fair question. And so and Jared might have the actual numbers better than than I do. So this chart shows again, you know, the per pupil increases during that time, our funding formula, part of it in addition to the per pupil, of course, how many pupils do you have? That's a huge part of it. And so if we are adding students and not having to build new buildings, of course, the revenue, you know, comes and that makes it helpful. So we're in a better place than the average state school in that respect. But I'm going to put Jared on the spot here and see if he can give a little bit better estimate. I want to, I don't want to throw a number out that's not accurate, but if you can, you know, help give a better picture about what our revenues looked like over that time.
Can you go back one slide further, please? I think it was the prior slide of this that, or the one prior to that. It showed the state average.
Yeah.
There you go. Inflation was at 17% and and statewide revenue limit only grew six. So what what did we actually grow as a district?
Yeah, so as a district, we were just shy of 8% on average over those number of years due to the fact that we've seen enrollment increases, which brings when there's additional students, we do see additional revenue coming in. So we were just shy of an average of 8%.
And historically, we've had a number of open enrollment students within the district. Is that correct, adding to the cost?
So I would say that our, so we bring in three, just shy of $3.2 million in revenue for our open road students. We do not create sections, classroom sections of just open road students. They're spread throughout the entire district. And part of that is, is that our board policy, school board policy has two types of numbers that we analyze when we're looking at growth for the next years of identifying sections. We have class size ranges, which has a minimum and a maximum. And we have a class size goal for each of our different grade levels. We staff to the goal side of it. And on the open enrollment side of it, we only go to the goal. So for example, if in first grade, we have an average of 19.5, how do you get a half a student when you're over like 11 sections? We would only bring in one or two open enrollment students to bring us up to that average of 20. And then at the high school, we we're back to that 25 to 30 new open enrollment students per at the ninth grade level. And that's to help keep our class size or our overall class at about 270, 275 without requiring us to add additional staffing. So, you know, as we look at it, it does bring in additional revenue to be able to offer additional resources to our students.
Awesome, thank you. It can you tell me in that time period, 2009, 10 to 2018, 19, what has happened to our district's test scores of our students?
It depends, you know, as you know, there's all kinds of types of test scores that we have. But we talk about like state standardized test scores, things like ACT and reading scores and math scores and so on. I would say those have been generally over that time period, pretty stable.
Okay, all right. So by this referendum passing, assuming you're going to have more staffing, is that we we could assume that test scores would go up because of that?
No, I don't think there's any correlation to test scores, you know, and and the staffing. I mean, that's. If this referendum passes, it will not be adding more staff, it'll be to maintain the staff that we have.
So at the end of the day, what's the district's mission? Is it to improve test scores or continue to build new facilities, have state-of-the-art equipment for the students, but not improve those test scores? I thought schools were here for test test scores to, you know, prepare them for the future and being productive adults.
Absolutely. Our mission is to make sure every student leaves our school district college and career ready. State standardized test scores are not necessarily the best measure of that. And those are put in place by legislators that, again, may or may not be the best indicators. So no, our goal is not to focus entirely on test scores, but there are a lot of other measures that that we look at internally as well in preparing our students.
But for a student to get into college in the future, they have to meet certain standards as far as test scores go, is is that correct?
Oh, sure. No question about that, that that can be an indicator for college admission. And that, yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Another question. I know there was some back and forth with the new school and bus road and road improvements. And there are going to be some improvements made now and some improvements made in five years. And 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 in reality, in my mind, we're improving the road twice, spending more taxpayer money rather than improve it right the first time. Is this in the, how do I want to phrase it? The best way to spend the taxpayers' money if we're going to spend money on improving the same same road twice? Or could that be planned better so that we're not spending extra money unnecessarily?
Well, that planning took place, as you know, when we negotiated developers agreement. So that was the plan that was approved at that time.
I understand. Was that the best plan for our taxpayers' money?
Well. That, I mean, that that's. You know, it's based, that was developed based upon the resources that were available. And so I don't know that I can answer that question.
Okay, thank you.
Dan, this is Sarah again, just a follow-up question to make sure I've caught it right. The operation referendum would not necessarily add more staff or services. It's more so that we don't lose staff or services, so we're not really gaining.
Yeah, that is, yeah, that is absolutely correct. So when the 2016 operating referendum was passed, we did add a significant amount of staff at that time because there had been reductions over or, you know, over time before that. So we do believe our staffing levels are generally where they need to be at this point. And so the more the focus would be on the retaining the staff that we have. That's correct.
It's Melissa, I have a question. Thank you for being here this evening. The survey, if I'm remembering correctly, when it went out back in summer, was it? I don't even remember now, it's been crazy times. But 3.7 wasn't on the survey. It was like 3.1 and four or something, right? So what, how did we arrive at this 3.7?
Yeah, that's a great question. So the survey asked different levels of of support. And so the three numbers that were asked, you know, near that, there was, you're right, 3.1 was asked, 4.0 million was asked, and 4.7 was asked. And the survey results showed strong voter support for 3.1 and then questionable for the 4.0. And so the board chose a number in between those. And that's where the 3.7, you know, came from. So it is a little bit of a projection based upon, you know, trying to differentiate between those those survey results between the 3.1 to 4.0.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for Dan? Dan, I guess I have, one of mine was already addressed, but has the district looked at other districts that aren't in the situation where we have to continue to ask voters for operating referendums? In other words, are there are there lessons learned or is it just because of the makeup of our district? And the circumstances that we're in that we're we're going to continue to be in this, this, as well as certainly state aids as as another different conundrum for all of us, all school districts across state?
Yeah, no, that's a really fair question. And so when you look statewide and Jared Trex is probably closer than I do. But I would say that it's a fair statement to say that many, if not most, of the districts who have had steady or declining enrollment, who have really struggled with their state aid. The majority of those have done operating referendums like we have and then continually renew them every four or five years, you know, to to exceed the the revenue limits. And and so I don't know exactly how many districts that that would be, but it's a large number around the state. Now, sometimes, instead of going back every four or five years, a district will ask to approve a recurring referendum. So it goes on indefinitely. And so then they don't have to go back and ask again. So I do think our board has taken the right approach by not doing that, that to reassess, you know, after a certain time period. More specifically to Dane County. Uh, more specifically to Dane County, um, I think it's there because there's been so much growth that virtually every school district has been doing facilities, referendums as well and adding buildings. And so then many times along with those facilities, referendums, you will do an operating to operate that new school, you know, or other things. And so those generally are recurring. Um, and I don't know exactly how many of our Dane County other schools have done, you know, the kind of the repeated operating every few years. There have been some, but uh, um, not as many in Dane County because of the growth. And Jared, I don't know if I got, if you just wanna clarify anything that I might have misstated or?
Yeah, I mean, I think when you analyze, you know, for the most part, the sixteen school districts in Dane County and specifically the ones, you know, the larger ones, uh, they're seeing, you know, four, five, six, seven percent growth annually, which brings in additional revenue. So in the state, um, is only providing about six percent revenue increases each year. Um, and if we, I mean, we've had a small enrollment increase. We've done our enrollment studies and that was part of the reason that we obviously move forward with the um moving or building of the new school. Um, but in general, I would say the, you know, the Menono Grove School District, we have slower growth than some of these other communities that are not going out for operational referendum. Um, it's obviously not that we're sitting, wanting to say that we, you just opened the floodgates. Obviously, there's a balance of, you know, slow growth to help us continue to meet the needs of our families and our community and to meet the new families that move in. Um, but when, you know, we're looking at, you know, maybe twelve or fifteen new residents, that doesn't um bring in a lot of additional revenue, especially when the overall membership count takes three years to count a full student. So when a new student moves into our district, we only get to count a third of that FTE towards our eleven thousand dollars per student. It actually takes three years to fully. So if they move into the district or they're in kindergarten, uh, even though that kindergartner is taking up a full spot and it might require us to um create a new section and hire an additional teacher, we're only gonna receive a third of that funding the first year and then two thirds the second year. And then the third year is when we get to count the full students.
Okay, that's very helpful. Any other questions, Dan, Jared?
I guess if I can ask one more, are, are there other areas that, that could be cut to maintain teacher uh wages uh at market?
Yeah, and it, you know, and, and when you look back at prior to the last referendum, what types of cuts were made, uh, staffing was always the last, you know, resort on the list. Obviously, that's the most important thing. Um, and so usually the first thing that goes is things like your capital maintenance. You know, those are the things that don't have immediate impact on your students. But as you know, you do that over time and then you end up like we were at where we had all this deferred maintenance and uh, um, and then, you know, you go to referendum for that. So that, those are the types of things that would be on the shortlist, that would have no educational impact in the short term. Um, you know, it is things like maintenance supplies and so on. And so those will definitely be looked at first.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Otherwise, we'll say thank you to Dan and Jared and Katie for, for joining us and uh sharing about the referendum.
Thank you. Again, thank you as well for having us this evening and giving us some time. And I also just would like to add, again, I really appreciate um and looking forward the opportunity to work, uh, for some of our staff to work with you as well and a couple of committees that you have coming forward with your housing task force and your uh diversity, equity, and inclusion committee. So thank you for, for partnering and we're looking forward to working with you on those as well.
Thank you.
All right. Um, the second item under a presentation the board was the update on the two thousand twenty trick or treat. Uh, Cindy already jumped in uh early on and indicated that the PTO um wasn't able to do what they were, were kind of just parade-like type thing. So I don't know if we have any other further updates or need to discuss that further?
Um, Cindy sent me a little note saying that the PTO basically had met right before our meeting tonight and uh um determined that they weren't going to be able to do anything this year, basically five minutes before our meeting. So it's fresh hat off the presses news, unfortunately, that um we can't anything uh for that. So I would hope that we um would encourage um our community to follow public health safety guidelines then.
Yes, and we'll continue to um do additional posts of the Dane County Public Health Guidelines for, guidelines and tips for safe trick or treat. Um, it's previously, previously been posted on Facebook and um if we haven't done so already, we could add that to the website as, as well. Lisa, could you mention when the trick or treat hours are?
Sure. So they are um four thirty to seven PM on um Halloween, so thirty first.
Dan, you might not have as much to add now, but I um, I know you were working with them on this alternative event.
Right. I got, I got the email this afternoon saying they, they weren't gonna go through with it. And that's fine, as long as we get the word out when trick or treat is and how, how to do it safely because of COVID, that's great. Uh, in years past, we would have police officers out there distributing candy from our cars. And we'll, we're not gonna do that this year, but we still will have extra patrol out there during trick or treat because it, you know, that's when people are out walking around some, sometimes in the dark and sometimes there's mischievous people out there. So we'll be out doing it as a normal Halloween, but probably not interacting as much as we have in years past with kids, parents.
Thanks. And then uh Parks and Rec, the Parks and Rec department's been working on a um little event as well that Sean can touch base on.
Yeah, thanks, Matt. Um, we're doing a, it's called a ghostly grove tour. And so we're recruiting people, homeowners to decorate their, their fronts of their houses and uh decks or whatever that they want submitted, photograph to us and uh kind of pre-register. And then we were able to secure some, some gift cards, a fifty dollar one from QuickTrip, a forty dollar one for covers, and then also uh focused on through and a thirty dollar gift card. So we're gonna encourage people to uh decorate their houses and then the public will vote on a winner. So um, that's kind of what we're trying to do to encourage Halloween.
All right. Thanks, everybody. Uh, the updates. Uh, anything else on that?
No, nothing else. Thank you.
All right. Uh, moving on then to new business, uh, we have a, a number of updates from consultants that we utilize for the village, uh, starting with uh Rude Bush and um, we had Kyle Adams and I think I said Tom on there too as well. So um, Kyle or Tom, you wanna take it away?
Yeah, hi, everybody. Thank you for allowing us to, to come here tonight. Uh, what we like to do is just give a brief overview of our, our, our marketing plan. I'll share my screen with that. I'll start with that and then Tom's gonna talk about the companies that we've got the pleasure of working with in the park. And then we'll have time for any questions at the, at the end here. So I'll get rolling. Uh, just by not ahead that are able to see my screen right now. Yep, okay, perfect. Um, so Rude Bush Commercial Investments, we're the commercial real estate broker for the, the Commerce Park. Uh, how we do our marketing strategy is we break it down into the three different sections by onsite physical media, digital, and then some of our networking and affiliations in commercial real estate. It's often about uh the connections that we've had with companies and other brokers in the past. So what I will do here is just touch upon briefly all of the areas in, in purple. And like I said, any questions, feel free to let us know at the end. Starting off with our, our site signs, we have real estate signs throughout the park. Uh, still a very effective tool for people that are driving by the property to know that the, the lots are available for sale within the park. Uh, another one of our avenues for our physical media is called Cyrex Magazine. It's published here in the Madison and Dane County area and features listings of commercial properties. This goes out to uh about uh three hundred and fifty people each month, uh primarily brokers, but then some in the finance world, uh attorneys and local chambers of commerce as well. This is just a screenshot of what one of those interior pages of Cyrex looks like. Uh, next we have our, our fact sheet, also known as a brochure. We use this whenever we're meeting with anybody out at the property to do a tour. And this brochure is online on all of our online listing services as well, which we'll touch upon in just a minute. Um, as you can see down the lower left here, it shows the available lots remaining within the park. And obviously, we update this whenever we have a, a sale of one of the lots. That is always current for everyone. The second leg of our strategy is what we call our, our digital strategy. And this is basically having the property out online in a number of various different formats that the public or potential business is able to see the property and ultimately call or email Tom or myself so that we can share information about the property. So some of the websites, we have it, of course, on our, our website, rutabush.com. Uh, a few years ago, the, the board at the time made the decision to move forward to have a, a website specifically for the Commerce Park as well. And this is cottagegrovecommercepark.com. We found this to be a very effective tool for especially companies that have already shown interest in the park, but wanna find out more details about the, the process and just other companies that are existing. Uh, firsthand knowledge, you know, Steel, when they were looking at the park, used the website quite a bit. So it's been a, a very effective return on investment. Uh, the top of the next page here shows our, our Google Maps. We uh have a, a Google Maps listing for the park that shows again, remaining sites available as well as different businesses that are within the park. The bottom is a mapping tool that the, the village has on their website as well. So again, multiple areas in which the uh business community is able to find the property online. The top portion of this page shows the online listing services that we use. Property Drive is a local one. LoopNet is national and there are many, many more. This is just a snapshot of the listing sites we use along with how those pages are presented. With all of this, we're, we're confident that we're reaching both a, a local and a national level, both uh with brokers and the general public alike. We do some email marketing from time to time. This is a snapshot of when the property was sent out in a broadcast email to other brokers. And then finally, the, the last uh part of our strategy is what we call our networking or affiliations. And I've touched on much of this already, but we break it down by local, regional, and national. So working with the Commercial Brokers Group, which Tom is a part of, working with our contacts at Aligned Energy and their Economic Development Department, so on and so forth. And then on a national level, you can see there some of the institutions that we work with. And I have the pleasure of serving as president of Mid-America EDC, which is a group of economic developers from across the Midwest. And we share best practices in economic development and attend a few conferences each year as well. I know Aaron has attended a few of these conferences in the, in the past. So we're very confident in our ability to, to reach many areas of the market. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Tom to talk about the, the companies that are within the park. So Tom?
Thanks, Kyle. So, you know, as Kyle just went through it, it's a, we think it's a really comprehensive marketing plan that we put in place for these properties. And really, you know, what we're targeting is, is, you know, the decision makers and their representatives. Very rarely does a buyer, you know, come to us and say, I wanna buy a piece of li, uh, piece of land and build my building. You know, eighty percent of the chance, eighty percent of the times, they're represented by, you know, either a broker or a professional attorney or accountant or something directing them. So, you know, really, our goal with all this marketing is, is if there is a need, they're gonna find the Cottage Grove Commerce Park. So that, that's been our strategy. And it's proven successful. Um, we, we started this listing in uh May of two thousand fifteen. Um, and it had some good successes. We've closed six transactions, um, and currently generating over eleven million dollars in assessed value. So um, so where we are at today is, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think our listing comes up next May, next year? Is that correct? So we're, we've sold twenty acres over the last five to six years. We, we're down to about fifteen acres left in the park. So we're on the home stretch. Uh, as you know, we currently have um two point seven acres under contract, the Dolphins Swim. So, so that, that's where we're sitting today. Um, and um, so hopefully, if everything goes, we'll be down to about twelve, twelve acres left. The biggest site um located along Highway N, which will be more retail, commercial type uses. Any, uh, any questions on us, for us?
If I can ask a question, uh, Tom, uh, this is Troy. Uh, the comprehensive marketing plan that you put together for the Commerce Park, um, what's it different about this plan than what you do for other clients?
Um, it's, it's pretty much a packaged um plan. Obviously, the Cottage Grove website's, you know, a new twist to it. Frankly, um, the, the bones are the same in the structure, but our spin that we put on each property is, is directed towards, towards that. Obviously, in this case, with the Cottage Grove Commerce Park, it's, you know, last intersection before Madison. Um, the TIF is a great incentive. Um, things we play up doing business with Cottage Grove, uh, it's pretty seamless and quick approvals. So the bones of the, of the marketing plan are, are the same for our bigger projects, but the spin we put on it or the story is different. And certainly in the case of the Cottage Grove Park, um, we, we've got, we have a lot of tools in our toolbox to help sell land out there.
Thank you. Um, one other question, I noticed that Summit wasn't listed, Summit Credit Union Headquarters uh as something that's happened, uh, and, and the value of that to the community is, is there, was that an oversight? Is there a reason that's not listed?
Well, actually, that, that site was not part of our listing contract. So that site's always been excluded. That was the old North Farm Co-op site originally, so um.
It wasn't village owned property?
Love to be a part of it, but that, but Matt and Aaron get credit for that one.
It wasn't village owned property, so we, we worked with uh Landmark on that. So it was a deal between Landmark and the village.
Exactly.
All right. All right, now you, now you say that, I remember it. The gray moment is gone. Thank you.
Right. I hope, uh, I hope Matt and Aaron got a huge fee for that one.
We did not.
I'm kidding.
All right. Any other questions for Kyle or Tom? All right. Thanks, Kyle and Tom. Appreciate it.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Have a good night, everybody.
You too. Uh, next up for uh annual review of consultants is Baker Tilly. And here it looks like uh we have Amanda Bloomberg.
Yeah, Bloomberg.
Bloomberg, sorry. Uh, and you've talked this before, Amanda, haven't you?
Yeah, I've uh talked with a group uh many times before, but um what I'll do today, and I apologize, my two-year-old is outside the door. Um. Um, oh, I'm sorry. Okay, all right. So what we're gonna do is go over um the services that we provide to you on an annual basis. And we'll talk a little bit about, um, sorry about that. Managing both kids right now. So um, so we'll talk a little bit about some of the other services that we can provide to you as well. Uh, just so you know, um, we're kind of an all encompassing firm as well. So I'd had, also have a brief presentation here that I can share with you. Um, it's going. All right. Can everyone see the screen, the presentation?
Can.
Okay, great. All right. So um accounting. Okay, great. All right. So, um, accounting and auditing, um, not quite as exciting as selling real estate. Uh, maybe in some people's minds, but, um, this is an annual requirement of the village, um, that the financial statements have an independent audit. Um, so we have, uh, worked on that audit for a few years here. And, um, I personally, um, am responsible for doing the review of that audit and signing the, the audit report. So what that encompasses is all of the funds of the village. So you know that there's a general fund and. Other, um, debt service, capital projects, special revenue funds, as well as the water and sewer utilities. So all of that is covered by the audit. Um, the main thing that we're, um, trying to accomplish here is the issuance of an opinion on those financial statements. So that's, uh, what we, uh, put, um, with our name on it. Um, also related to that audit is report on internal controls, um, which, uh, as part of the audit. Were required to assess internal controls, uh, over the financial reporting process. So what kind of, um, you know, controls are in place by the village to help with the accuracy and the completeness of the financial reporting. Um, uh, function. Um, in addition to the audit, what you may not be aware of is some of the other, um, services that we provide. And we do it all at one time pretty much, um, because all of the same numbers kind of roll up into, um, these different reports. But, um, we provide, uh, a compilation, um, of the state financial report form C. So this is a standardized report that is required to be filed with the Department of Revenue on an annual basis. Um, we also compile the PSC annual report for the water utility. So that is a regulatory report that's required by the Public Service Commission of Wisconsin. Um, we also compile, uh, financial statements for each of the TIF districts. So each, um, statutes, uh, require annual reporting for each TIF. And so we, uh, um, isolate the TIF activities and, um, present that. In a way that can be used to complete that online reporting that is required. It also provides, um, a, a nice status of each of the TIFs so that you can take a look and see how each one is doing over the course of time. Um, as you know, TIFs have kind of a long life to them in most instances. Uh, we're talking twenty plus years. Uh, so it's nice to be able to look at historical and, um, accumulated data, uh, which is what these TIF financial statements, uh, give you. Um, we also provide some level of accounting assistance to the village. Um, the village, uh, has a number of, um, complex transactions that occur regularly and, and not so regularly at times. And so we do assist, um, during the audit time, uh, with, uh, uh, you know, making some adjustments to the financial information. That, um, is in the, uh, village's accounting system. And then, um, and then we present the financial highlights to you as the village board. And so I believe we did that, um, a couple of months ago here for the twenty nineteen year. Um, just to give you, uh, in a summary here, the objectives of the audit. Um, is it really to provide a reasonable assurance that the financial statements are materially correct? So if you've seen the financial statement, uh, document that is issued, uh, with the audit opinion. Um, you'll know that they're kind of long. Um, there's a lot of information in them. Um, there's summarized information, there's more detailed information. So there's a lot that really goes into them. And so, um, we actually assist the village, um, management with pulling those together. We do that for a lot of our clients. Um, and then like I said, we do issue a, a, an opinion on those financial statements. And we typically issue an unmodified opinion on the village's statements, which is the highest level of assurance that you can get from your auditor. So basically that just means that we believe that the financial statement document is materially correct. Um, and does not have, uh, significant errors. Um, the compilations that I talked about, so our state financial report form C, the TIF financial statements and the PSC report. Is basically an accumulation of information provided by management. That's, um, basically we take the audited information and group it in different ways, um, to ensure that it's reported in the way that each of those. Um, um, agencies or, or state departments want to see that information. The internal controls, like I said, we, um, are really interested in, in the controls that affect the financial reporting process. So if we were, um, throughout that process, if we identify, um, weaknesses or potential, um, issues such as. You know, segregation of duties is a really common one for smaller, um, entities. Um, we will include that, um, identify that as a internal control deficiency. And then we use that to then plan, um, what our audit will be, given that that deficiency exists. Um, accounting assistance, like I mentioned, is, you know, just basically helping the village with some of the more complex transactions that, that happen. Um, what's interesting is that we work with a number of municipalities on an annual basis. So the types of transactions that maybe, you know, the village deals with once a year at year end, we are seeing over and over again. So a lot of times it makes sense for us to be helping out with some of those particular transactions and that's not uncommon. Here's our approximate timeline. Um, generally, uh, we do some preliminary field work during the month of November, December. Um, this involves some planning, um, some risk assessment. We do walkthroughs of your controls. Um, this is where we identify, you know, what kind of control weaknesses might be existing. Um, we update our information, um, that we have had on a historical basis. That's usually towards the end of the calendar year or that upcoming audit. Um, final field work, we usually complete, um, in the January, um, like third, uh, week in January, I believe we usually come out. Um, I believe it'll probably still be virtual, um, at least through the end of the, the calendar year here. But this is where we do, um, basically finish up our review, um, and audit of all of the financial information for all of the funds. So we come out on site, um, we look through a lot of, um, you know, whether they're bank reconciliations, vendor invoices. Um, supporting schedules for information or, or, uh, numbers that are in, uh, included in the financial data. Um, to support what is in that data. During the months of February through May is when we're wrapping up, um, any open items that might have been, um, you know, left open at the end of January. And we're in the process of producing the deliverables. So when we look back at, um, the types of things that we're issuing. That financial report form C, the PSC report, they all have different deadlines, um, attached to them. So we kind of take a look at them and make sure that we're getting them done in the timeframe that's required. May and June is typically when we issue, um, the final financial statements. Um, and then June and July is generally, um, when we present the financial highlights to the village board.
Amanda, this is John. Sorry to interrupt, but, uh, your slide deck is sticking on this first slide, at least that, that people are seeing.
Oh.
The board did get the deck before, so I know which slide you're referring to.
Okay.
But just to let you know, and maybe it's because you have multiple screens or something like that.
That's probably it. I will retry this. Sorry about that.
Or maybe it's just me.
No, it's probably me. Is that better?
Yes, now we can see a specific slide and then it looks like, yes, there's the.
The green one? Okay. Sorry about that. Um, but yeah, if you have the slides, that's great. Um. Um, basically we went through the services provided and the objectives and then we went through the timeline. Um, so here's where I was at, um, with the other, uh, Baker Tilly services. Uh, we do provide these on occasion, um, or some of these to, uh, the village as needed, such as utility rate studies. Um, as new accounting standards are released, we, um, regularly assist the village with implementation of those. What does it mean? How does it apply? What's the extent? What are the reporting changes resulting? Um, uh, TIFs have to go through, uh, a number of audits throughout their life, so we provide those types of services. Uh, I also wanted to let you know that we do, um, provide a number of complimentary webinars throughout the year. Um, on various things and tho- those are, um, you know, whether it's new accounting standards, whether it's trends in the industry. Um, you know, things like, you know, how do we, um, you know, search and retain talent? Or how do we, uh, plan for, uh, turnover or retirements that we know are coming, things like that? Um, so there's a, a host of different topics that are available. So if, uh, I assume that, uh, your village management is on our distribution list. But if there's anything that anyone else who would like to be added to the, the distribution list, uh, feel free to reach out and then we can get you added. Uh, we have search and staffing type services, economic development consulting. Uh, we're doing a lot of CARES Act work right now, um, trying to, um, navigate through all of those challenges. Um, grant compliance audits, cybersecurity, IT reviews, operation reviews, cash flow forecasting, capital improvement plans. So a lot of different types of things outside of the audit. We do have, um, not always myself, uh, is the best person to be doing these, but we do have a team. Um, of a lot of public sector employees who work, uh, within the Midwest and across, um, you know, various states that have. Uh, that work, you know, very closely in these types of areas. So if there's anything on here, you know, that, uh, you know, you're looking for. You know, feel free to always reach out and we can, um, always answer some questions about them too.
Amanda, that maybe, maybe one to add, um, in, impact fee assessments and impact fee services. I, I, maybe I missed that one, but, um, you guys do that for us as well?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That was a while ago. I think, you know, when, when impact fees were really popular and I think we helped get them set up for you. Um, they haven't been quite so popular these days, um, lately, just with this, you know, the slowdown in growth and that kind of thing. That most of our clients have seen, but, um, but certainly that is something that we have worked with the village in the past. Uh, I just wanted to wrap it up with just a summary of who, um, uh, works on the village of projects. And Vicki Helen Brand is a partner. Um, she has done work with the village for a long time, specifically as it relates to the water and sewer utilities. Um, I've worked with the village on both, uh, village fund and utility fund sides as far as the audit goes and a lot of the annual work that we do. And then Cameron Sawyer is the senior who, um, works on the audit with me. So with that, um, all our contact information is there as well. So, uh, with that, um, I'll open it up for any questions.
All right. Thanks Amanda. The, any questions from the board?
All right. Well, thank you very much for having me. I appreciate it and, uh, feel free to reach out with any questions. Uh, we, we do appreciate working with the, the village each year and, and look forward to another year of the audit coming up here soon.
All right. Thanks again, Amanda.
Thank you.
We'll move on then to, uh, another annual review presentation from this next one up is Computer Magic. And are either Brandon or Tom from Computer Magic available? It's like we've got.
Yes, we are.
All right. Take it away.
Good evening and thank you for having us. Uh, first of all, it's been a few years since we've talked to the board. So I just wanted to go over a little bit about, uh, Computer Magic and what we do. And, uh, we've been around since nineteen ninety-eight and we specialize in providing enterprise level IT. For small and medium businesses in Southern Wisconsin. We're able to do that for a couple of reasons. First, we continue, we continuously invest in our systems. And processes to simplify our clients' technology so that it works for them. Secondly, we've developed a company culture that's all about providing the best experience for our customers. One of the biggest and most important decisions that. That we've made was to prioritize customer service above everything else. It has allowed us to develop a team that loves working with our clients as well as working together for our clients. Uh, we've supported the village since about two thousand and three and started supporting the PD when they moved to the municipal services building. Uh, we believe the best way to eliminate IT problems to, is to catch them before they come, become visible. So doing that, we monitor the villages, vil- the villages, uh, systems twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Uh, we have, uh, when an issue is detected, uh, it automatically creates a sport ticket with our, in our system. And we can then address that issue. Uh, beyond the continuous model monitoring, we also provide, um, ongoing support for all IT infrastructure equipment. Uh, this includes, but isn't necessarily limited to monitors, printers, external drives, switches, routers, wireless equipment. Um, probably some other things that I can't remember at the moment, but, uh, we also maintain the village's phone system. Uh, which includes adding and removing users as well as redesigning things as, as things come up as what happened with COVID. And, um, needing to get people to work from home. Uh, we manage all network related changes, including new employee hires and fires as it relates to the IT environment. Uh, we review and manage all software installation on the server and workstations as the need arises. Um, we monitor and manage all license compliance, let no hiccups happen with expired software upgrades. Um, we're, we maintain relationships with vendors, with, with vendors as it relates to IT software and hardware. Uh, we've worked with Baker Tilly in the past, uh, on Clarity and some of the other villages' software. Uh, we take cybersecurity very seriously and stay up to date on the best practices for IT security. As you probably know, municipalities are being targeted by cyber criminals. That's why it's incredibly important for us to make sure that your data is always protected. Uh, we do this in two different ways or a couple of different ways. This is just, this is an exhaustive list, but. Uh, providing antivirus for all the computers in the village. Sorry, my headphone just popped out. So providing antivirus for all the computers and servers in the vill- village as well as, uh. Firewall policies to filter out malicious traffic that comes into the village. Uh, given the need for remote work, we, we offer remote user connectivity through our virtual private network. That allows village employees to access work from home. In the early days of the COVID crisis, we were able to get quick, quickly get village employees connected from home. So they can continue to function during this time. Uh, we back up all the village's data with our ba- backup and disaster recovery product. This is encrypted data. The encrypted data is stored on a local backup appliance that resides in the server room. And the data is also replicated offsite. Uh, we fully manage the backup solution and validate every backup to ensure that the data is recoverable. This solution gives us the ability to virtualize and protect the village endpoints in case of a catastrophe. Um, flood, fire, we've seen a few things like that. Um, we're able to get people up and running even if the servers aren't there. So. Uh, that's the gist of what we're doing for the village right now. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
All right. Uh, thanks Brandon. Uh, real quick question on cybersecurity. So obviously, you know, the firewall and all the other stuff electronically that, that you guys do is, is there? What about user training? Because you can have all the firewalls and everything else, but if a link gets through that somebody's going to click on. And all of a sudden we've got vicious malware or something of that sort on, on a PC and then in the network. Uh, do you guys do that too? I mean, is there any education pieces that, that staff get?
We, we do have some, have some education pieces that we send to the staff on occasion. Um, as, as we get them, we forward them to the, to the staff for review.
That being said, this is, this is Tom speaking. Uh, that being said, we are getting ready to launch um, what we're calling an educational component to our service. And that consists of uh, the training. So we call it the bullfishing uh, training. Uh, it's a phishing simulation that gets sent out uh, with the intention of seeing um, you know, who is vulnerable in terms of your staff. Uh, then the idea is not to really punish that, that individual, but to provide them with material to, to help them um, posture themselves a little bit better and um, to spot those phishing links and um, because as you put it, you can have the best systems in the world, but then it's that one employee that gets, that opens the door for the cyber criminals.
All right, thanks Tom. Uh, other questions from board members? IT is that interesting, right guys?
It is. Well, thank you all for your time tonight.
All right, thanks Amanda. Um, all right, then we'll move on to again, uh, another consultant that we use, in this case, Associate Appraisal, our appraisers. Um, and uh, Nick, are you, I think I saw you on.
Yeah, good afternoon. Can you hear me?
I can. I think everybody else can.
Uh, just one second, I'm gonna pull up something quick here. All right, well, good afternoon, uh, ladies and gentlemen. Um, this is uh, Associate Appraisal. We do represent the Assessor's Office. This year, we did successfully complete a uh, revaluation and annual maintenance uh, there in the village of Cottage Grove. Most of the changes were due to the changes in the real estate market. Um, all properties in the village did see a, a change in their assessment this year. Taking a look, uh, we, we started, uh, well, everything that changed included the personal property and the real estate. Uh, in the personal property section, we identified all the personal property located in the municipality um, subject to pro- personal property tax, tax, mailed each owner a statement of personal property, recorded the assets declared and the records for each account and valued each personal account and notified each owner. So at the end of result, we revalued a hundred percent of the village's personal property. Taking a look at the real estate, we classified and assigned the correct statutory tax classification to all the land and buildings in each property. We completed field inspections for the annual maintenance, which was completed at the beginning of the year um, as of January first, twenty twenty, which is the assessment date. Um, we completed uh, issue, we completed uh, reviewing the properties that received permits for new construction, properties involved in splits and combinations, and we continue to track the progress on these building permits uh, going forward into the twenty twenty-one year. As part of the revaluation process, we did uh, delineate all new neighborhoods and made sale ratios with sales versus assessed values in each one of those neighborhoods and updated the values again to market value what properties were selling for. As part of that process and some of the reports that were provided to the Department of Revenue include the MAR and the TAR, as well as all of the valid arms-length sales were reported to the Department of Revenue in a timely fashion uh, prior to the February eighth deadline date. On the screen in front of you, you can see that uh, values increased largely over the twenty twenty year as a result. The total assessments increased one hundred and sixty-one million, four hundred and eighty-six thousand, one hundred dollars from uh, the January first, two thousand nineteen locally assessed values to the January first, twenty twenty locally assessed values, which included approximately a twenty-three and a half percent. This should bring the municipality near a hundred percent compliance or right around a level assessment of a hundred percent. Revaluations are required when the municipality falls out of compliance. What does that mean? That means once the assessed values are ten percent below or above equalized value, the municipality is required to uh, complete a revaluation and bring values uh, to market, current market conditions. And that's what we have completed here um, for the January first, twenty twenty assessment cycle. If any of you have any questions in regards to the process, I would be happy to answer any of those.
All right, any questions for Nick?
Um, I would just make a comment that it seems like the reassessment went fairly smoothly.
I can absolutely agree that these assessments went very smoothly. Um, we did mail out the assessment notices in July, July twenty-fourth. Uh, we held the open book on August twenty, or excuse me, August eighteenth, and I sent out all the open book notices of change on August twenty-sixth and completed the board of review uh, on September twenty-fourth. I believe we had one residential uh, property that uh, contested their value.
Great, thank you.
All right, any other questions for Nick?
I do have a question about um, what options you work with on other municipalities on maintaining uh, equal or maintaining assessments year over year. Do you do a sampling of addresses each year? Or is it kind of a revisit every few years or?
Uh, well, it, it all really comes down to what the municipality wants to ensure uh, fairness amongst the property taxpayers. Um, some i- in this, generally the annual, uh, generally a revaluation doesn't occur annually. Typically, it's a, a maintenance cycle. So next year, we'll be going into a maintenance cycle and we will be um, looking at all the new constructions, updating properties that have changed, uh, again, due to split combinations, new construction, new uh, additions, remodeling, uh, things to that nature. Municipalities do have the choice to stay near equalized value annually. It typically comes down to dollars and cents. For instance, in some municipalities, we are required to stay within five percent of equalized value annually. So what does that mean? That means every year, we're looking to update the level of assessment. So uh, I will use the Village of Sussex as an example. There, we visit twenty-five percent of the properties annually and we change or send an assessment notice to every property owner annually, uh, typically with a small one and a half, two percent change as the market changes, their assessments change. So they receive an, an assessment annually. That often is uh, more costly than the current procedure that we are going through in the Village of Cottage Grove, where we maintain um, the current assessments once, u- until they fall out of compliance. Again, what is that, ten percent above or below uh, equalized value? In this recent case, you guys were approximately at eighty-five percent uh, level of assessment in two thousand and nineteen. What does that mean? On average, properties are selling for about fifteen percent more than assessed value. Um, as the market changed into twenty twenty, the equal, uh, Department of Revenue increased the equalized value in twenty twenty. And again, we would, we would maintain that on an annual process. So you have the maintenance year where we're just reviewing the annual assessments and changing when necessary, approximately every five to seven years. We could be taking a look at the assessments and changing them with equalized value annually, or we could set some other type of maintenance and revaluation structure to stay um, close to equalized value annually. Again, it all comes down to co- dollars and cents and what the municipality is, is looking for.
Okay, thank you for that information.
Um, this is Deb. I just wanted to add that I um, when the revaluation was passed, there was also talk of then, next year, creating some type of resolution, probably resolution. Getting the village into more of a routine of like Nick had suggested, maybe doing twenty-five percent every, maybe not every year, but maybe every other year, but getting s- getting um, some kind of a schedule in so that we don't end up in the same situation we ended up in this year of being fifteen percent below. Um, cause that just does not make for happy people anywhere.
Yeah, that's a really good point, Deb. Thank you.
Like I have a, on, on that note, I will tell you, uh, property owners are much more accepting of their assessed value changing uh, two percent, three percent annually versus the large twenty, twenty-five percent every five to seven years. Um, so there is some positive feedback from property owners in that regards. You don't, you don't get the big shock and awe when they look at the assessment.
In reference to that, what would the difference in um, cost be if we're doing twenty-five percent of the village on a, every other year basis versus what we did? Um, and, and all the costs we had between the last revaluation up until the new evaluation.
Well, that is definitely something I can make an action item for and put together some numbers for you guys to look at going forward with several different options of, of annual maintenance or revaluation uh, from the Assessor's Office. I can definitely provide you guys some, some future values for different types of annual work from the Assessor's Office.
Awesome, thank you.
All right, any other questions for Nick? All right, thanks Nick, appreciate it. Next, we have uh, item seven E, new business is uh, discuss and consider directing staff uh, to have a solicitor transient merchant permit application translated to Spanish and made available on the website. So I'm assuming this is both English version and uh, if a Spanish version is created, is what I'm assuming.
Yeah, this is um, something that we kind of talked about in ordinance review, but it's really mostly a result of last meetings, um, public comments about the permit application and I, after thinking about it, I think it would be a good thing to have diversity, equity, inclusion committee talk about having more of our forms available in Spanish. But since there was some question about this specific form and that it might be helpful to have it available in Spanish, I didn't see why we should wait for diversity, equity, inclusion to start meeting to get that translated and available if it would be helpful for um, merchants to have access to that. Um, the English form is available on the website, so um, I guess it was just an item that I thought we should discuss if we wanted to fast-track that.
All right, thanks Heidi for the background. Um, any other comments from board members?
Did we assess to make sure that the form is um, getting what we need and not asking for things that we don't need? Like, are we sure that the form in its English version is what we want?
I could jump in on that. Uh, there, the, the, the form and the system probably uh, are ready for a review. Uh, there's some requirements, some, some actions that we take with that, uh, with those applications that aren't uh, identified on, on the applic- on the form itself. And um, as with any, everything, we need to constantly be diligent and diligent about making sure that we have set standards to follow in decision-making so that um, we treat everybody the same and that, and, and the, you know, the especially staff know when to say yea and nay on one of these. So that, that whole, that system, I think is, is ripe for a review. But we learned that with the issues we had with uh, the co- the um, Chamber of Commerce.
I, I think it, it would be fantastic to have it available in Spanish. I would suggest that having English and Spanish on the same form, not having a separate Spanish form that very few people could maybe read and understand than if on the receiving end. Um, so that would be my suggestion, but I don't know that we should um, pay for getting translation services and everything until we have the finalized English version.
Yeah, that makes sense and to have it on the same form, so then the person reading the form on the receiving end also knows what it is that they're, they don't need to translate it back to and look at the English version. Um, I guess what, we talked about the ordinance in general and that was something we're going to talk about um, in ordinance review. Um, there are very similar forms in other municipalities, which we could um, look at what information we need and um, they are similar, but um, yeah, before we have it translated, I guess it would make sense to see if there's, and maybe Mary can help us and Lisa and the PD, I think they do a background check based on that information.
Um, I had a question as far as on the website, is it possible to have a fillable form on the website that can be entered that way rather than a PDF where you have to print it, fill out and then email it back? Um, and same with like, you, where you can pay online or pay from the website as well? Is that a feature upcoming with our new web design or?
Well, I can touch on um, the form and the fillable aspect of it and thing. They currently can pay for it online right now. Um, that is a, a feature that has nothing to do with the upgrade of the website. Um, fillable forms, we just have to make them that way. Um, right now, I, I think Aaron has the capabilities of kind of tweaking our forms, but I would suggest that if we're revamping it, um, that we work on that at that time. Um, but yes, I, I agree that sometimes the fillable are a lot easier for users to do that.
Um, how long are we looking at this taking then? For um, to review the form, what's needed on it and then getting it translated?
Well, I would say that uh, it, it, well, we'll probably start with the ordinance and that's, the, the form will really flow out of that as we, as we do that. It'll be, it would be similar to what we did with uh, the, the alcohol license um, review that we just undertook a few months ago in terms of making sure the ordinance requires what you want it to require, the form collects what you want it to collect. And then uh, it, we're, we then get that translated as people are, are, are requesting here. How long that will take, um, I don't know, but it's also getting into the end of the food truck season and it's probably a really good time to do it. And so it may take us a couple hours of work and then we wait for a board meeting um, or an ordinance review committee meeting, you know, so as far as time goes. You know, time in terms of effort won't be very much, but if it goes through the, the, the process a number of times, it'll probably stretch out a few months.
Okay.
Does anyone have an idea on approximate cost for um, translation services? And I'm sure it depends on how many forms we have.
Usually per word, is usually how they structure it. I mean, I bet you, I would budget a couple hundred dollars for a form. Must it, like a single-sided form would be my, if, and I, um.
So it's not gonna be too substantial, doesn't sound like.
I, I, I would, if it's more than a couple hundred dollars, I would look, I would get another cost estimate from someone else.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any other discussion on this? This is discuss and consider, I think, um, as well, so.
So would a motion to um, refer this to ordinance review committee to work on further? Is that something that sounds?
Is it ordinance or legal or a combination of the two?
Well, when it's referred to ordinance, oftentimes because of these legal aspects, we pull legal in. And then ultimately it'll have to get codified when we all, it's all said and done, but um I think we, as Larry mentioned, we had to start with the ordinance, get that up to date, make sure it's current. If there's any state statute adjustments, uh gets the information we need, whether it's uh various department heads or whoever needs it. And then follow on to that is, you know, adjust the form accordingly and get it translated so it can be then put in on our website and be fillable uh on the website.
Um, Heidi, when you, cause I, I listened to ordinance review committee a little. What was their final outcome in discussing that?
Uh, for the ordinance in general and on topic in general, uh, well, there were a lot of questions around why it's needed if Dane County already requires um a lot of licensing and uh require more hoops. Um, we talked about the safety aspects of um the village, knowing that people selling things within our village are certified and safe to be doing so. And because it's a transient merchant that they don't have a permanent location, if we needed to find them, then we would be able to, but um they were concerned about the difference between just having a food truck parked on a public street selling versus parked at a business that organized the event. So that was kind of the main question they got. Why, you know, if you're just driving around selling, that's one thing, but that was kind of the main hangup that we were hoping to get clarification on.
So at your next meeting, are you going to have um like Larry or Rick there available or what?
Uh, well, it kind of depends on what, what kind of input we get now and feedback at discussion of uh, you know, what happened at the meeting. So I guess, I don't know if Larry has any thing he wants to add now or?
Yeah, we have, um, I actually was planning on when we get to the uh, the, the section where you give your update on the committee, I was going to talk about sort of how we would see that progress, that our involvement with that committee progressing i- i- in a way that would hopefully end up saving money for the village in the long run and maybe help you all to not spin your wheels quite as much. So when we get down there, we can talk about that, just in a general sense, not just on this project alone.
Um, so for this topic then, um, I think I would make a motion to table until we have, um, until ordinance review comes back to the board with more information on the ordinance.
A second.
Motion, second. Thank you. Uh, Heidi, do you have enough direction based on what you've heard to take back to ordinance that you need to first dig through the ordinance and work with Larry or Rick to revamp that?
Yeah, for this item, I think then we can talk to more general about how legal can help us with that when we get down to ordinance review committee.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion. Go ahead.
Is it, is it, is it possible to um also find out what the cost is going to be for, you know, not only this form, but all forms in general to translate them into Spanish? I think that would be valuable information for us as well.
Yeah, it makes sense to get a quote on, if, if we can find a translation company that, and they could give us different quotes. Like I said, they usually it's per word and the more words you have, the bigger discount you get.
I'll, I'll start with at least one quote so we have an idea. Um, and then if it's approved, we'll get at least one additional quote.
Okay. Good point. Thanks Troy. So we have a motion and a second to table this particular item. Uh, ordinance committee, I think, has enough direction at least uh to move forward. So any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Oh, hi.
Hi.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. All right. Then uh moving on then to reports from village boards, commissions and committees. First one being uh law enforcement committee. Uh, that's myself and Sarah and Troy. So I'll start and you guys can jump in uh from my notes. But the, the main focus for our meeting, which was held on twenty-second of September, was really to talk about the budget for twenty-twenty-one. Um, Chief kind of walked through his, his points. Uh, the, the main thing was to hold eh, everything the same as twenty-twenty with the exception of obviously the benefits and, and labor. And we're going through the labor contract with the unit rate now. Um, and Jeb was able to provide at least an estimate there. Uh, so the uh committee made a recommendation of, it was uh just one, over one point five million. As far as the budget goes, and I can't remember the percent increase that was um off the top of my head. I don't know if I wrote that down. Chief probably has it off the top of his head. Um, I got two point eight five percent. Some more in there.
Yeah, roughly. Yeah. Okay. Um, other items that we talked about were just in the normal reports and activities. Um, things are pretty much uh moving back to, to normal as normal can be uh when it comes to the activity of, of the police and engagement and such. Obviously, they're still in, using the protective equipment, everything that, that are needed in order to protect the officers as well as the public. So that continues to, to progress. And that was all the big highlights I had. Uh, Sarah or Troy, anything else I may have missed?
You got it.
Okay. Any questions on that one? All right. Then we'll move on to uh the library planning uh committee. Melissa, do you want to give us?
Yeah, we had a short meeting um compared to our other ones as the survey is ongoing until October fifteenth. Um, we basically met to discuss what business, um, what questions we would ask of uh business owners. Um, and so we decided that we would each reach out to at least five businesses asking a set um, set questions that we came up with to ask business owners to short and sweet to just get a little bit of input from business owners. Um, that was it pretty much at that point last week when we met, or on September twenty-third. Um, there were about four hundred um responses to the survey already. Um, so we're getting a lot of good feedback. So we'll have a lot of input um to come back to the board with once it closes. And that remains open on, until October fifteenth. So I really appreciate staff also sending out the emails and putting it on Facebook and um on the website too. Um, it's really kept the, the interest going, I think. So thank you to staff for all of your help with that. And the library planning committee meets again this Wednesday where we're going to just review um, uh, if we've reached enough businesses and then also start determining what exactly we're going to be presenting to the village board once the survey is complete. Well, thank you.
Thanks, Melissa. All right. Um, moving on then, the next uh committee is the board of review. We met uh last Thursday, was it last Thursday or any of those, uh, September twenty-fourth. Um, we had uh one resident who um wanted to review their assessed value. Um, Nick was, was on with us, the, the assessor as well, and we walked through, through that. Uh, ultimately, the board uh agreed with the assessment. There was an adjustment for that particular resident um based on the late uh evidence that was provided, both the assessor and to the board review. So um that went through there and then we held it open for the required couple hours um for that. I don't know if, Deb, if you have anything else to add to that?
Um, no, it was like Nick said, it was very, being a revale here and the percentage jump that it did, it was a very quiet board of review, much quieter than I thought it would be.
All right. Uh, zoning board of appeals. Um, that's staff, I think. Deb, I don't think any other.
Not me.
Not you? Met on seventeenth. I don't know who, who may have wrote on, who's on that?
That would be Erin.
Oh. Erin, you have any updates there?
Yeah, this was just a request for a variance for a, we're setback um for a, uh, someone wanting to build a three-season room. Um, it was approved by the committee. Um, the lot in question was a little bit oddly shaped, so we felt it constituted a hardship, at least to the degree that we could give the variance.
Thanks, Erin. Uh, moving then on to joint fire committee. Jeff, Melissa, Paul, anything that we got? A couple items to discuss and consider there. Do you want to walk through um the committee um meeting and then we'll, we'll, we'll go through the, the two items to discuss and consider?
Sure. I'll start and if I miss anything, um Jeff or Paul, please hop in. Um, so they, the rapid response vehicle has been delivered. Um, they were putting the final touches on it and it should be in service very soon if it's not already. Um, the furnace was repaired. They got the washer and dryer. The PFAS foam um has been disposed of safely and it has been replaced with non-PFAS foam that was used in the town of Cottage Grove fire a couple of weeks ago. So it was, it was good that we got it replaced so that um we didn't have to worry about that environmental. Not being, not being good for the environment if we use the PFAS and then having to go through all the reporting that would have been required. So it was very timely that we got it replaced. Um, then engine three, we'll get to, we discussed the fire department budget, which we'll talk about more at budget time and uh the emergency services building budget. Um, we're meeting October twelfth to um look at sign design. The, the fire department got a safer grant that allows them to get a new sign up to twenty-five thousand dollars at the emergency services building that will have LED lights um to help um recruit new firefighters and just display things about our community and the fire department. And the two, two um quotes that we had, one was not, well, it was below twenty thousand dollars because there was some miscommunication on the amount of the grant available. And so it wasn't quite as good as the other um design, but that, the be- the better design was over the twenty-five thousand dollars. So the chief was going to go back and get a, a quotes up to the twenty-five thousand dollar mark and possibly some other ones for us to look at. So we'll be meeting on October twelfth to review those specifically um new sign designs. Um, Jeff or Paul, did I miss anything going through that real quick?
You've covered it.
Great. Thank you. And then, so that brings us to our discuss and consider items. The first thing, there's a memo in the packet on these two items. Um, the first thing is engine three repairs. Um, engine three, we're looking at replacing in twenty-twenty-two. Um, and the, unfortunately though, it needs some repairs now. It's needed some small repairs that brought, that over the past few years that have been minor, but it made it be out of service for a couple of days to a couple of months. And um unfortunately, when, when it was in for, to be looked at, it's something else that needed this pump to be re- replaced. And um the pump still operates currently, but it has to work harder to get up to the right pressure to pump the water um sufficiently. And they don't know how long it will last if it's not repaired. And because engine three is the backup, if something were to happen to our first engine that goes to fires, um, engine three might fail as well. So then we'd be in a tough spot. So it was the committee's um, um, decision that we should get it repaired. And the first quote that we had was um for the eleven thousand one hundred eighty-four dollars. So the committee approved recommending that um that the repairs be completed up to twelve thousand dollars with each municipality um proportionally splitting the cost because the fire department has a repair and maintenance fund for very minor repairs and it's up to ten thousand dollars and that covers all of the vehicles. And they don't have enough in their budget for this repair of the pump. Um, since that time, Chief Archibald had another estimate done from rely, or from another company, which was from Renner's, which was twenty-five hundred dollars less. Um, nine thousand seven hundred twenty-four dollars and forty-one cents. So the, the memo says up to twelve thousand for the port, um, proportionally split between the town and the village. However, uh, you may want to go with the less expensive option um and approve, say, the village's portion up to ten thousand dollars for the engine three pump repair. So any questions on that?
Melissa, just real quickly clarify that the second bid then is to do the same repair, correct? It's just a little bit, yeah, okay.
Right. Yes, exactly.
Okay. Um.
And if I can ask, uh, Melissa, will this prolong the life of the vehicle? That we'll be able, instead of replacing it in what, twenty-twenty-three, we might get twenty-twenty-five out of it, twenty-twenty-four out of it?
No, it doesn't. It's um for public safety reasons is the main reason why we're looking at doing this repair now, even though um it will still need to be uh replaced in twenty-twenty-two. Um, just in case something were to happen to our main engine, since this is the backup. Um, the ladder truck is also a backup, but it doesn't, um, it, it doesn't fit real well into town spaces. So they, they'll use it if it needs to be, if there isn't another backup, but um it's not ideal. Um, it is possible that with this pump being replaced, that it will give us a little bit um better market value when we sell it. But the main reason is for public safety.
All right. Uh, thank you. I'll make a motion to authorize uh um uh shared repair cost on it up to ten thousand dollars based on the lower bid that we received.
I'll suck at that.
All right. First by Troy, second by Jeff. Uh, any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Hi.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. I want to figure out.
Yeah, the proportional is based on whatever, but yeah, that, I'm glad we have um accountants and treasurers to figure out the exact figures needed. Um, and so the second thing then is uh roof repairs on the emergency services building. Um, they found leaks in the tower and above the workout room. We had two estimates. Um, one was from N- Um, one was from N I R, uh which was for four thousand one hundred and ten dollars. That included the twelve hundred dollar maintenance per year, coming out to inspect the roof um twice a year at six hundred dollars per visit. And then we had one from Great Lakes Roofing for sixty-two fifty, which would repair all of the issues um that they say need to be fixed without yearly maintenance. During our discussion at the joint fire committee, um it was determined that the roof was built in or roof was put on in nineteen ninety-nine and it's supposed to be a thirty-year roof. So the, if we fixed all of the issues with the roof, it should hopefully help it to last that extra ten years. Um, the, the unfortunate problem is that we've had a lot of repairs needed to the building over this past year. And so that we only have four thousand three hundred and seventeen dollars available in our repair fund until the new budget is approved in twenty twenty-one. So the fire committee um approved the Great Lakes Roofing Proposal at sixty-two fifty using the emergency service building repair funds. Um, and then the remaining amount would be split proportionally between the village and the town.
Melissa, can I ask, what is the formula? Uh, how much is a village liable for in these things versus the town? Is it based on equalized value? Is it based on a fifty-fifty?
Yeah, it's equalized value. Thank you. I was looking for that word the last time. I couldn't remember it, but yes, equalized value. And I'm not sure what the, that is specifically.
Actually, for the emergency services building, it should be fifty-fifty for the building itself.
Oh, well, good, even better.
What about, uh, what about the engine repair, uh, Deb? What's, what's the, what's the ratio there? I'm just curious.
For the fire agreement right now, um it's strictly equalized value. And I just did that today. Um, and the village is like sixty two percent and the town is thirty-one, if I'm remembering correctly.
Right, awesome. Pressing your mind, that's great. I will make a motion to approve the um roof repairs uh based on the Great Lakes um bid uh with a fifty-fifty split between the village and the town and that our portion uh and that's, that's above the four thousand some odd dollars that they have in the fund for roof for uh maintenance.
All right, is there a second?
Really complicated, sorry.
I'll second this motion.
All right, and a second from Sarah. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor? Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. All right. Thanks, Melissa. Anything else, or?
Nope, that's it.
All right, super. Um, then moving on to Community Development Authority, uh Jeff or Sarah?
All right, so we met, uh, we had a makeup date uh for the twenty-ninth of September. And um we talked primarily about um the um um doing the marketing, um which company we'd want to work with, what we'd want to ask the board for in order to market uh the village more. Um, so we ended up uh coming up with uh picking three of the five um um RFPs that we got. We, we liked what Distillery had to say. We like uh Signal File, uh Signal Fire and then Weber Marketing and then what we are going back to them for, uh Erin's going back to primary, or yeah, it's going back uh primarily to just be a little bit more specific of what we're looking for in that. Uh, we did uh go ahead and uh vote on and approved that we would ask for thirty thousand dollars um in this coming budget in order to um market the village and hire a marketing firm to, to do that for us. Um, any questions on any of that um at all?
So Jeff, there, the final, you have, you guys haven't selected uh
Nope.
The, the one yet. So you're, you're, Erin's going back and clarifying some things for the three, correct?
That's correct, right, Erin?
Okay.
Yeah, there was a little bit of a range and they didn't quite all have the same things in the scope, so I think we just need to kind of make sure it's apples to apples.
Okay.
And how we came up with that number is we, all right, so we did have one and I think that was um feel, which was like way up there, but then they also included a bunch of stuff we didn't need. Um, and then we had Weber, who was right around thirty two thousand to thirty-eight thousand, I think, depending on what we wanted. But they had a scope uh phases that we didn't really necessarily need at this point. And then Distillery was the lowest and then s- uh s- Signal Fire, Fire from Delavan was uh roughly about five thousand more, maybe six thousand more than them. Um, so I think Distillery was around twelve. Um, Signal Fire was around eighteen and then Weber was thirty-two to uh thirty-five. So looking at what everybody had included and some of the pieces that were missing, uh we settled on that thirty thousand. Um, as it just kind of a budget request. Um, I I have a feeling, you know, just a gut feeling, we could come underneath that, but we wanted to make sure that the amount was there um in order to work with the right company. We have not made any decisions yet, John, though. Um, but we did narrow the five down to those three, um just based on what the, the committee was feeling. Once we get approval and if it looks like it's, it's a go, then we'll sit down and try to figure out, you know, which ones would be the best. We'll want them to come in and do a presentation, um whether we do that on the committee level or whether we do that on the board level or whether we do it both. Um, we haven't determined that yet, but it was just the, the whole, the whole idea meeting was just to figure out how much we should ask for uh budget-wise. You mean, we, we went into this thing having no idea what it costs to market a community. Um, especially with Ted Ten coming up and everything that we have and all the other areas that we have still vacant and ready to go. How, how do we properly market it to businesses that are looking for a place to, to land? Um, so to answer you, I hope I answered your question a long way around.
Uh, you did, thank you.
Okay.
All right, any other questions for uh Jeff?
Yeah, we, we also talked, um, we also had the um um the Housing Task Force. We talked about that. We read the letter and uh i- i- and it seems like John is gonna step up from our committee and then uh we, we also discussed um um having Mick part of it and it seems like that's the possibility. So I think that's what we're talking about a little bit later. Um, so that's where those, that's the, what came out of those discussions, so.
Okay, all right. Thanks, Jeff. Um, then moving on to public relations, Troy?
Uh, yeah, we met, uh, what was it, last Tuesday, the twenty-ninth, a couple items discussed. One was the operating budget, which really consists of um uh labor. Uh, and that, uh, looking at history on that over the years, we, we agreed upon a twelve thousand dollar a year amount. Uh, the other thing that was discussed is uh our equipment is getting, how about I phrase it, tired, uh, ready to tip over. And uh, uh, they, we, we, Derek came up with a uh kind of an, what do I want to call it? Um not operational, but a um long-term budget for the equipment. Uh, yes, thank you, Matt. Uh, couldn't come up with that. Uh, up through uh twenty twenty-five. Uh, and, and for next year, uh, what he's, uh, what they're asking for is eighteen thousand dollars to upgrade our camera system. Right now, we have two. Uh, this would give us four cameras. Uh, it would uh give us the ability to stream HD on YouTube with a lifespan of about ten years. The second thing that um we talked about and approved was the boardroom sound. Um this would require several items to ensure that there's uh no feedback with an estimated lifespan of twenty years. Um, and again, there are a few things in the capital budget for next year and uh we didn't, we didn't tackle those at this point in twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five. Um, are there any questions in reference to any of that stuff? And Matt, do you have anything you want to um um speak in reference to as well?
Sure, just thanks, Troy. One, one comment would be, uh, you know, obviously we're right now meeting virtually and we don't know how long that will, will be. Um, so we won't, we won't be jumping right away early next year to, to make these purchases. We'll, we'll time it with the need. Um, the, these purchases will also help us if we get to a point when we want to do a, a hybrid meeting where some people are potentially in person and we still have a virtual component. So those will uh all be options going forward with these purchases.
You know, one of our committee members is a, a former trustee, Jim Elmore, and he's operated the equipment and indicates how, how antiquated and, and difficult it is to work with. So um just, just a, a side note, I guess, is that, so.
That was going to be my question um about if if, when we're able to return, if we would have the capability to have some virtual component, whether it's for um board members, staff, or uh the public, so. So that, that um, I'm glad that's in there. Thank you.
All right, uh, then we'll move on to Naffig Landfill Monitoring Review Committee. Uh, Jeff or Paul?
So the meeting uh uh was in person at uh the town hall. I was present. And actually Melissa, uh, I had her on FaceTime on my phone. Uh, the main focus, uh, there was a presentation uh provided by Strand, representative from Strand went through uh multiple graphs uh showing metrics of contaminant levels uh in that uh in the landfill. Um, I would say there was very, very little in the presentation that was cause for concern. Uh, all the graphs that were provided, um, and again, there were multiple graphs that showed different le- uh contaminant levels and they were well below the standard threshold line. With the exception of one, um, to give you some background, I'm not sure if you're all aware, there's ten gas probes in the landfill area that measures oxygen and methane levels. And one probe that's identified as gas probe nine is right on the entrance to Nat Big, right off of Highway N. And this gas probe nine is on the north end. And for the past several years, um the metrics have been showing a higher level of methane that's been above that threshold line. Uh, there is some pro- proactive measure that was taken uh place. They um, they put an additional uh gas probe, which is identified as gas probe ten. And that is just on the northwest side of gas probe nine, uh but is also closer to the residence. The intent was to see if the methane um was migrating from nine into that area. Uh, I don't recall the install date of gas probe ten, but they did have a five-month read. So it was May, uh, June, July, August, and September. And all five minute, five-month read was um, um very good. It was well below the threshold line. So the good news is that the methane is not migrating, you know, over into that area. Um, but going back to uh gas probe nine, um, they have had four months uh, uh, the last four months of the methane levels trending down to finally having their first read over a several-year period below the standard threshold line, which is good news. Uh, I did ask the question, do they think that, you know, there's attributes to uh gas probe ten now supporting nine? And they said there was no correlation. They felt that was because of the lower um level of rain that we've experienced over the last several months and in turn, lower levels of methane. So there's still a concern. Um, there was two recommendations that came forward. Um, uh, really driven from the D N R. And one is that we continue to monitor it, but also to uh be proactive in the event that the D N R puts a little more pressure on us. And that if the methane levels uh go up, uh, they'd like to see uh us install uh eight vertical vents around gas probe nine. And the cost uh for that is forty-four thousand, which would be split uh by both the village and the town. Um, and so uh I'd asked, you know, uh, is this something that we for, see as an inevitable? I, I didn't get that answer, uh, but it, it sounds like in do, doing due diligence that we would have the money set aside in our two thousand twenty-one budget in the event that the D N R uh was seeing. And we have to report these levels every time they go above the threshold uh to the D N R. Um, and if in the event that the D N R feels it's necessary uh that there'd be a push for us to install uh these eight vertical vents. And again, the cost would be split by the town and the village. And so uh that was our recommendations being moved forward at the split cost between the village and town and um infusing that somewhere in the two thousand twenty-one budget. Uh, any questions as it relates to that?
I, I can just add.
Cost split equally or with the cost?
Split equally.
Okay.
Split equally, so twenty-two K apiece.
Thanks, Paul. Paul reached, reached out and, and uh brought this to my attention last week and um, I've been able to work our portion into our existing capital plan, uh shift some things around and um, we're, we're still within our uh financial management plan budget, so we do have that in there just in case.
And so the other side too was the agreement. Um they spent so much time on the metrics, there was a little time on the agreement, so we didn't go through all the fine lines, but I did see right away that the uh, there is an increase from uh last year in the um the agreement. Uh, it's going to twenty-four K from nineteen. So I did some quick math, you know, it's twenty-eight percent increase. And so I, I quickly asked the question, you know, twenty-eight percent. And they said, well, yeah, normally, you know, you would see in that inflation uh at three to six percent would be make sense, but because there's been more services and more monitoring of this gas probe time, gas probe ten, it's my understanding of seeing a few more dollars added to the agreement. Anything I'm missing, Melissa?
Nope, you got it real good.
All right, uh, there's a discuss and consider then approval of the professional services uh by Strand for Naffig landfill, so beating into what Paul just said.
I'll make a motion to approve the professional services by Strand for Nat Big landfill.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, second by Sarah, first by Melissa. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. Thanks, Paul.
One thing, uh, I think uh you missed is that Steve Anders is remaining the chair and Jeff gets to be the secretary again since he wasn't at the meeting.
Yeah, that's right, Jeff.
All right.
Working, working that smile.
Try to hold back the excitement.
I was already, it doesn't matter.
All right. All right, we'll move on to ordinance review committee then. Heidi?
All right, so we met um last week on the thirtieth. And we had three main topics that we were going to talk about, uh, that we talked about. So the first is, I guess that's easiest, the Knox box. Um, Jess uh works for the fire department and has experience with Knox boxes, which are the key access keys to buildings, commercial, large residential buildings. Um, so he feels that there could be some updating that we could use on that. So he's gonna do some research and bring it back to our next meeting. So that's the easiest to get through. Then we talked about the food truck ordinance, um, the transient merchant uh ordinance. And uh, as you know, there are kind of still some questions on that and it sounds like some updating needed. Um, so we can talk about that in a moment. And then I guess this is also sort of a general comment for ordinance review. They didn't, the committee said that they didn't want to spend a bunch of time gathering information, putting together gathering information, putting together an ordinance for something such as uh, if we should allow chickens in the village, if the village board wasn't going to approve such an ordinance because there's a lot of research and considerations on how food would be kept, um, if we should require a license for someone to have it, if the board didn't even support an ordinance that it would allow that anyway. So I guess that's kind of a general conversation for ordinance review. In addition to, it sounds like if we want to get legal involved with the committee as well.
So I'm the one who brought the chickens to the ordinance. I'll, I'll own that. Um, and it's because some folks had asked me in our neighborhood if they could have a chicken, chicken. And so let me look at the ordinances and the ordinances, you know, if you know unless you could prove that animals lived there in nineteen sixty five or something. Um, and so it seemed a little odd to me. I don't know that it's a big um, concern or need. I was just hoping we could update the ordinance to take out the, unless in nineteen sixty five animals lived there because that would mean I could justify having pigs, right? Or so, I mean, it just seems a little, I, I would be, I, I think it'd be just sufficient to just leave the ordinance and then take that weird exception out right now unless, and I don't know if the staff have had village residents inquire about other types of things like chicken. Um, but I don't know that it needs a lot of our energy, but can we just update the ordinance so it's not so ancient?
Yeah, it does seem like there's a little bit of room for interpretation or misunderstanding, especially when it cites, you know, something older. Um, but I guess the committee was looking for some direction on that. If um, it's just cleaning up to make it more clear or if we wanted to amend the ordinance in a big way to allow for chickens in the village, I guess. So they were just kind of looking for that direction.
Uh, Larry, just a quick question, just for, for the ordinance committee, uh, and the questions both Heidi and Sarah brought up. Why would there be a need for this nineteen sixty five in there? Obviously, this is in reference to perhaps when some of the village was still farmland and yet it was still in the village, perhaps.
Yeah, it, it looks like it's just a grandfathering clause, uh, which would have just made it easier for everyone to understand that um, that really this, the adoption of this ordinance, which must have happened on or around January first nineteen sixty five would have been uh, just, just recognizing that those places where there was an animal already, uh, or animals were typically kept, um, that that would be grandfathered. This is another example of a uh, uh, you know, one of the ordinances that I think are, is worth looking at. Um, I talked to Aaron a little bit about this today and it sounds like um, there had been some at least half-hearted attempts in the past for people to argue that certain types of farm animals were to be kept as a pet. And so this is a perfect example of, you know, when we, when we move our attention to a particular regulatory aspect of the village ordinances, we should look at them and make sure they're doing what we need them to do and that they create the outcomes that are expected. Because here, there's a lot of people that have pigs that are, that are absolutely domesticated pets. Uh, and so, you know, there's there, there's a chicken soup. Um, I'm lucky enough to have um animal crazy family members. We have thirteen chickens. And believe me, when a chicken, we don't eat any chickens. They are pets. And uh, so I think there's some room for clarification here as to how the regulatory system would work. Because otherwise it's likely there will be some problems in the future.
In addition, Larry, too, and Aaron, maybe you can touch base on this. There's, there's the, the ordinance that discusses animals and then there's the zoning code and different land uses that um may be more conducive to, to animals. For instance, our um rural holding, when, when we bring in um, bring in what might, what may be a farm and that's in the village and there's, there, there are parcels in the village that where chickens are allowed. It's, it's just they're not currently allowed in single family residential, correct, Aaron?
Yeah, so there's a formula under that land use that lists different animals versus chickens, pigs, whatever. Um, you're allowed so many per acre, but it's only in that rural holding district, as Matt said. So we've interpreted that to mean, you know, in the case of the pig a few years ago, that those animals just weren't allowed then in the other districts. So I think whatever we decide about the chickens, we just want to make sure the zoning is consistent.
That reconciliation is what's important here, I think, because uh, right now, the uh section one sixteen dash three that was referenced with the nineteen sixty five reference probably doesn't mesh very well with the zoning code. And so I think it's, this is a perfect example of something that just needs to be cleaned up. Now, I can't tell you that if there are parcels where animals have been customarily, customarily kept since the beginning of nineteen sixty five, if we change this and strike that language, those animals would still be allowed there, in my opinion, under general grandfathering um, cons, uh, principles. Um, or at least there would be an argument of that, but there's no reason why that language can't be removed.
Yeah, growing up here, uh, I can tell you we're eighteen fifty five, just behind that sits today. Clark sisters had a their barn and there were pigs and, you know, steers and cows in it. So, you know, um, I'm still looking at getting a pet bear on this. As a side note, is that a problem? No need to answer.
Not if you know somebody.
So what is the direction to give to ordinance committee? I mean, I think I'd like to start with just cleaning it up and matching the two. I don't know that we need to spend a lot of energy on figuring out if we're going to allow chickens or not, but maybe you need to know that in order to figure out how to reconcile the two issues, right?
This is probably a really good time to talk about what we would recommend in terms of the ordinance review process. Because I think, you know, and me, as you, as you all know, I, I spent a lot of time in the legislature drafting laws for the state and, and what I found is the best, the best way to, to arrange for these types of clarifications and changes so that we spend the minimum amount of time necessary and therefore the village pays the least amount of, spends the, the least amount of its resources on the process is that the committee should talk about what policy it would like to see done. Um, and that policy decision can move through the board. Um, we, you know, if we have an existing ordinance and the committee would like to first be briefed on what the ordinance does or doesn't require or how it should be interpreted, I think the person to start with on that is Aaron. A lot of the ordinances would fall under his purview. If it's something that's more of a police power ordinance that isn't under his purview, then it can come to us. And we can certainly back Aaron up on some of the interpretations. The way I would start it is if the ordinance committee wants to take on a topic, we should staff, between staff and, and ourselves, we could provide them with a quick and short briefing on what the status of the law is currently in the village. Maybe what kind of limitations there are at the state level for that type of a regulation. So they can set the framework for their discussion. That discussion can happen from a policy basis instead of changing terms of an ordinance or recommending terms for an ordinance. That can go onto the village board and if the village board agrees, it can turn, they can, you can turn it over to us. Aaron or, or our firm depending on the topic, we can draft those changes and run them through the change process. Because that way we'll, I, I almost certainly, in almost every situation, we'll spend a lot less time. And the ordinance review committee will have a whole lot more functional and, and um, I think they'll waste a lot less time by having the tools they need to do what they're, they're charged with.
Um, yeah, I think that that definitely would help some of the problems I see with the committee starting out with just coming up with topics and having to do a lot of the research and background and then having a whole bunch of questions along the way anyway, um, to kind of I guess facilitate um, uh, an efficient process for review.
And I wouldn't recommend that we, you know, staff this committee, uh, you know, that would certainly get expensive. But certainly if there's, if there's a particular topic that's up for review, we could start the meeting with that discussion. We could provide a briefing, answer some questions and jump off and it'll be, you know, half an hour, hopefully in those circumstances. Um, but it should really jumpstart the process and, and even in just the short time we've been working with the village. I'm generally having a pretty long list of things we need to look into with respect to ordinances. And it'll be good to work through those piece by piece. So as an example, with the food trucks ordinance, I, I don't know if it's, you know, it's probably the, the, the village is best served if that committee understands exactly what is or isn't required. Maybe does a little bit of its own research on what other communities require. And I know that there, some of that already has been done. And then have that policy discussion. What do we want to require? Like for instance, say in the village, if, if, if one of our entities, village entities wants to hire and pay for a food truck to come, that is licensed under Dane County ordinances, that where there isn't going to be a sale of food, they're not going to be moving from street to street. Maybe that's something you don't want to require a license for, but just to notify the village. Those are the kinds of, in that wording, you would send that on to the village board. And if the village board agrees, we could, we could jump in and out and draft that in a very short period of time.
So how would you handle the, the current, the consideration on our agenda tonight of the chickens? How if we take this kind of suggested process, what do we do next?
So, right, so the, so that's a, is a great example. You know, many communities are moving toward allowing chickens. In particular chickens as a sustainable local food source. You know, the city of Madison allows a, a six pack of chickens, they call it, and, and, and most of the communities around do too. And, but, but no roosters because that's the loudest part and the most, um, the nuisance aspect. So I guess what I would start with on is just knowing that we, we, Aaron and I have identified i- i- issues with the way the zoning code and our animal ordinance, keeping of animals ordinance mesh. They don't mesh well. They need to be reviewed. So what I would do is I would go to the, I would recommend that the, the ordinance review committee talk about what you'd like to see in Cottage Grove and look at some of the neighboring community ordinances and really sort of do, do some exploratory work. Come up with a list of policies you'd like to see implemented, run that through the board. And whatever the board decides to do, we'll integrate all those choices with the actual technical changes we want to make on the backend. And if the board, if the committee and the board decide to make no changes other than they'd rather not see the year nineteen sixty five in the ordinance, then we'll have our direction, but we'll only do it once.
So in this case, it's probably tabling this then, correct? Larry?
Tabling it or asking the ordinance committee to come with their recommendation?
Or table until ordinance comes back with their recommendation?
Yeah, that would be what I would say.
I'll second that, Heidi.
Make sure Lisa got it. Thumbs up. Okay, good. We have a motion second then uh, on this particular topic. So any other further discussion? All right. Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. Anything else with ordinance, Heidi?
Um, our next meeting is, let's see, we meet the last Wednesday. Uh, so it's the twenty eighth. If anyone wants to join us to talk about our counterparts, chicken ordinances and food trucks and and I'll probably be in touch some with Aaron and Larry if I have any specifics as I prepare the packet. So thanks.
All right. Thank you. All right. And moving on to reports from village officers. The first one up is myself. Um, continuing to fill in some of these committee members. So the first one is nomination for Melissa to join the emergency preparedness committee. Again, that's uh, with our emergency director, Matt Wagner. Um, and, and being able to kick that off, that was the last, the last fill we needed for that. Um, nomination for Mick Conrad, who is a former trustee and former member of CDA to the housing task force. And then uh, laying it right uh to the ad hoc diversity equity inclusion committee. Um, and we've got still a number of feelers out for both housing task force for folks to get the form submitted as well as uh diversity. So more to come. Hopefully we'll be able to wrap this up next, next time with getting all those get those two committees moving forward. Any questions or comments here?
I'll make a motion for all three.
Second.
You know, motion second then for all three uh nominations. Any discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Uh, then we move on to Stafford. Uh, Larry? You're gonna give us a quick.
Two quick items. First, first of all, when Aaron came on the video and I saw his Packers shirt, I was reminded that Melissa has let me down. She was supposed to make a motion that it's illegal tonight in the village of Cottage Grove to say anything about what's going on in the Packer game for those of us who are recording it and will watch it later. So please don't, um, please, please don't give up, give up the, the ghost there. Uh, but seriously, uh, there was a, a report last week from Lisa that the village had, was fortunate enough to receive a ten thousand dollar grant. Um, that uh was going to be put to very good use for election related uh expenses. And shortly after that report, there was a lawsuit filed against that particular uh entity that was providing those grants. Um, and there was concern that, you know, goes, goes, basically the village is on the hook for spending that just about right to the dollar, ten thousand dollar amount. Uh, but we did a little research and if you hear about this case, uh, it, they're really only challenging five cities. Typically Democrat majority cities in uh, in Wisconsin. And so that case doesn't even apply to the village of Cottage Grove. Also, we just took a real brief look at it and it looks like it's uh, it's very meritless. And so not only will it be unlikely to result in any change for the uh communities that are named in the, in the lawsuit, but the village is not named. So we should have no trouble with that grant moving forward. You might hear something about it though, but just don't worry unless we tell you something's changed.
All right. Thanks, Larry. Uh, COVID nineteen updates. We usually run the, around the gamut here. We'll start with Matt.
Yes, happy to report, um, no updates.
That is good news. Uh, chief?
Nothing new to add, John?
All right. Thank you. Um, I don't know if I see, oh, Matt's still on. It seems, he was on earlier. Yes, there he is.
No report.
All right.
I, I had a question um, for, for Lieutenant Wagner. Uh, when will we find out about reimbursement um of our, of the items for COVID relief or the CARES Act or any of that?
Yes. I, I, that, that's all.
That's the answer.
We're dealing with the state, so um, I have no clue.
Okay. But it's been submitted, right?
I'll call around to my uh, my friends and other municipalities that actually put in um, ahead of us and see if they've even gotten their reimbursement. So then I'll kind of give it the timeline, but um, if I hear something, you guys will be the first to know.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right. Good question, Melissa. Uh, JJ?
No report.
All right, uh, Sean?
I'm happy to say that I don't really have a report either. Everything's running smoothly.
All right. And last time we talked about throwing Lisa in the mix and obviously uh, for the timing right now, November third is quickly coming upon us. So Lisa, anything?
Um, no, yeah, it's quickly coming upon us. Um, I had some numbers here because I figured I might get asked. Um, to date, we have four thousand seven hundred and forty one registered voters in the village. And to date, we have sent out two thousand two hundred and sixty one absentee ballots. Um, and I'm anticipating that we will be extremely busy. Um, and I'm anticipating that we will be extremely busy come in-person absentee voting, um, when that opens on October 20th.
All right.
I was wondering, will we put the board out again that says the website to request or? Cause I think we had that out for the spring election. You can request your absentee ballot from the website, but you know, the traffic board?
Oh, okay, you, you, you lost me for a minute there. Yeah, I, I'm assuming that JJ and Chief Labor would, um, I think they, they control that board. Um, it's not in use, but we certainly can do that and put some information on there.
Is it in use on Vilas Road though, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
There's a lot of media out there. Um, we share a lot on, um, our Facebook page from the Wisconsin Election Commission. And I do have several posts going scheduled for the next month, um, with a lot of good information.
All right, thank you.
And I also know that there's, there's mailings from various organizations too, um, about, you know, where to, where to go to my vote and all that stuff as well, so. Um, go ahead.
Sorry, on, um, for JJ with Vilas Road, um, when is that supposed to be done?
That project is very flexible for the contractor. We want to get the best pricing. Uh, that's a long way of saying they have to get it done in time to get, uh, asphalt down this year. So typically the plant stopped making that around deer hunting season, so let's call it that.
Cause the, it's really confusing for people because they see the stoplights there, but then on the weekends they aren't working and so then it's just really confusing.
Yeah, we, uh, brought them back out for last Friday and it, it's been a constant, uh, conversation with the contractor there to make it clearer when and when they are not working.
Okay, thank you. Good COVID update.
Uh, and then Deb, I don't know if you have anything?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay. All right, then we'll move on then to communications and miscellaneous business. Uh, the first one there is consideration of the vouchers. Any questions, comments on bills?
I will comment on this. It's a, looks a little bit different this week, just, um, so we have my vote up and running and we've been using that, not my vote, I'm sorry, my viewpoint, talking about elections, um, for invoices that we've been doing the AP workflow process through. So because of that, it now breaks out, um, unpaid invoices, which are the ones you normally approve, but then also in a separate report, you'll see paid invoices. Those are invoices that have been paid since the last board meeting, the last bills list. And they were paid because, um, there's various reasons, but mainly it's because the due date is less than 30 days and we have to get it a manual check out to them so that we don't incur late fees. So I just wanted to point out that that's why it looks a little different.
All right, any questions related to that or motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers as presented.
All right, thank you, Heidi. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Melissa. Any further discussion or questions? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. All right, correspondence, I just wanted to, I know that the, the board members already got these, but I wanted to mention them real quick, uh, both related to Glen Grove Apartments. And we'll submit these with Lisa. Uh, one from Andy Cardinal at 114 Glen Drive, indicating his opposition. And then the other one from Dick and Kathy Schmitz at 818, uh, North Parkview Street. Uh, again, um, uh, indicating that we shouldn't approve those, the Glen Grove Apartments. So those will be captured and you guys all saw that already. Next, then we have upcoming community events. We have obviously the trick or treaters at the end of the month. Anything else anyone wants to note? All right. All right, then we'll move into the next part of the agenda is, the first one is a closed session. Closed session is for a background check for operators license application. In this case, an alcohol beverage license denial from the police department. And the motion, we'll make the motion that the village of Cottage Grove, uh, board will enter a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.85 parentheses, one parentheses F, considering financial, medical, social or personal histories or disciplinary data specific to persons, preliminary considerations of specific personal, uh, problems or investigation of cha-charges against specific persons except where par parentheses B applies, which, uh, if discussed in public, would likely have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any persons referred to in such histories or data involved in such problems or investigations. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion second, this is a roll call vote. And then we'll pop into the other, um, Zoom related to closed session. So Lisa?
Limberg?
Aye.
Valencia?
Aye.
Allen?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Radcliffe?
Aye.
Vandervelde?
Aye.
And then Larry, real quick, we have another closed session. Should I cover that now in open session, then we move from one to the other? Or do we need to come back and open?
If you, if you'd like to, um, it would be more convenient to take the second vote now to go into closed session, uh, and then we can move from one to the other rather than to pop back in, hold a vote and go back into a different closed session.
Okay, thank you, Larry. All right, uh, then the second closed session again, this one is, a closed session is for negotiations of development incentive negotiations in tid number five. Uh, the motion is the village of Cottage Grove Board will enter a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.85 parentheses, one parentheses E, deliberating or negotiating purchase, purchasing of public properties, investing of public funds or consideration of specific public business wherever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. So is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second, I try. Uh, then again, this is a roll call vote, so please, Lisa?
All right, Allen?
Aye.
Vandervelde?
Aye.
Radcliffe?
Aye.
Limberg?
Aye.
Valencia?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
All right, we'll move into, uh, the first closed session then.